I am going to call us to order and ask you all to mute yourselves for just a moment while we do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Madam Clerk, if you would, call roll.
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Give him just a second to unmute himself.
He doesn't show as muted. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, are you present?
We'll check back in a minute.
Okay. And Mayor Gopos?
Here.
So we have quorum, and I, it shows that Eric is present. I'm sure he'll be here in just a second. Now I'm looking at our new agenda, and I want to point out to everyone that we're very fortunate that our very capable clerk has been working very hard to create new opportunities for public comment. And we have a new public comment phone number, and that number is 951-405-2956. Again, that phone number is 951-405-2956. I will mention that phone number several more times during this meeting, but that, if you have public comment, is the place to call in.
And Joe, you might want to mention the conference ID.
And our conference ID number is 567-255-729-pound. Again, 567-255-729-pound. So those, that is the newest opportunity for public comment, and thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for looking into new and different ways for people to add their comments to our meetings. Eric, can you hear us? Are you there?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Sorry, we just weren't hearing you a second ago, and we called you present. We could see you in the meeting, but we just couldn't hear you, so there you are.
Thank you.
All present, and without further ado, I'll move us on to old business. Drew, take it away.
Okay, thank you. Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thanks. So this is this week's COVID-19 update. I just wanted to start with talking about some of the operational changes we've made over the past week. For parking enforcement, we are not enforcing several violations at this point. Measured parking, residential parking permits, and then certain other violations such as rolled curbs, parking the wrong way, and parking in alleyways. And you'll note the percentages next to the different violations are the percentage of the total violations that were issued from the start of the shelter in place through early last week. And there's no information next to residential parking permits because we had decided to not enforce that as soon as the shelter in place went into effect. So we are focusing on educating the public on these violations during the shelter in place. Now with that said, we are still enforcing a number of things, including red curb or any other marked no parking area. And as you see, that's over 50% of the total violations over the past three weeks. We're also continuing to enforce handicap spaces and parking and crosswalks or intersections. We do plan on phasing back in to enhanced enforcement after the shelter in place is lifted. Other operational changes, public work staff, as of today, the field maintenance staff is back in full duty. We do have measures in place to ensure their safety. Everyone has appropriate personal protective equipment, and none of the employees are sharing vehicles at this point. For parks and rec, the parks and golf staff are back on full duty. Schedules have been modified to match personnel with the need. So we've actually got golf staff working in parks several days a week, and we've expanded weekday hours and weekday hours to monitor the parks. With most of the, with all of the amenities that parks closed and basically just the open space available for passive recreation, we found that having an additional presence in the parks is helpful to deter any bad behavior. So shifting into redeployment update. Initial assignments were identified over the course of last week, and those assignments include doing prepackaged food at food banks. So helping to do that, doing food delivery and distribution, providing shopping assistance for seniors, doing telephone wellness checks on seniors, and assisting with business outreach efforts. And we actually put four more people onto that today. So as of 2:00 this afternoon, we've had 11 merit employees put into the redeployment pool. 10 so far have been assigned with another one pending. And we've actually accommodated five per DM employees as well, with four being assigned as of this afternoon, and the other one we expect to get assigned later this week. In terms of business outreach, we've been, since late last week, been working on high-touch contacts with businesses. They made 103 calls late last week with a focus on downtown businesses, including restaurants. They made 48 direct contacts, left 26 voicemails, and had 49 follow-up emails. Each, we're calling these kind of high-touch contacts because each direct contact call has been between 10 to 15 minutes. We're trying to understand the businesses' needs, trying to get them information about the loans that are available to them, the resources that are available to them, the information that's available to their employees about unemployment, and information about the commercial eviction moratorium. So we're continuing with those calls this week, and we're going to ramp up, ramp up our resources to continue to make as many calls as we can. Just some information we received on the 48 direct contacts. 37 of the businesses were still operating, 27 were still open to the public, and 16 of them were aware of the commercial eviction moratorium. But many did note that their landlords were working with them, so that's, that's good to know. And also, we stood up a business, business resources webpage about two weeks ago, and so far it's gotten over 700 hits. So it's been a good resource for our business as well. In terms of business assistance, there is an opportunity for us if we choose to provide direct assistance to businesses. This would be in the form of grants up to $10,000 and targeted at businesses with up to 10 full-time equivalent employees and less than 2.5 million in revenues. This is something that the San Mateo County Credit Union has gotten involved with through the San Mateo County Strong Fund, and they've offered to do the administration of applications and disbursement of funds through the credit union. So if we were to want to do this, the funding would come from our general fund. Several of our neighboring cities have either already done this or are considering it. And as of today, they expect to be able to, the credit union expects to be up and running in terms of being able to administer this program by next Tuesday or Wednesday. In terms of the CDBG funding, I think I mentioned last week, the city was getting an allocation of approximately $440,000 in CARES Act CDBG-related funding. We've been analyzing how we could utilize that funding, and staff's come up with two considerations for council to consider. One being would be to provide direct rental assistance that would be administered through Samaritan House. And the other would be to issue a notice of available funding to targeted nonprofits that are providing support directly to COVID-19 relief efforts. I mean, after, you know, considering all the options and trying to figure out where the best use of that money is, staff is recommending that we utilize the CDBG funds to provide rental assistance. We feel like that'll, that'll be the biggest bang for the buck with that CEBG-dedicated funding. If the council is in agreement with that or wants to go in a different direction, our plan is to take whatever direction we go to the Community Relations Committee on, for their consideration in late April, and then come back to council for approval at the second meeting in May. And then finally, the, under the health order, essential government functions are continuing to be allowed. And so many of our public works projects are deemed as essential projects. And these include all the wastewater treatment plant and collection system-related projects, all of our street and sidewalk work, and then a number of other projects throughout the city. The full list was included as Attachment A of the administrative report. And what we've done is we've notified the contractors via a letter that their projects are proceeding, but also letting them know that there's, they are able to proceed, but they're still subject to the remaining provisions of the order, such as the social distancing protocols. With that, I'm looking for council confirmation or direction tonight on the actions taken in response to the emergency proclamation. And that would be the continued adjustments to operations and the deployment of personnel. Any direction on providing direct assistance to small businesses via grants administered through the county credit union? Direction on staff's recommendation to provide the CDBG funding for rental assistance? And confirmation on the essential public works projects? And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, I, sorry. I muted myself, and then I forgot to unmute myself. That happens, you know, it's very common these days. There's a, anyway. Rick, I saw your hand first, go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding the calls that we're making to employers with resources for employees. I was talking with Recology today in South Bay. I know that South Bay Recycling and Recology are not necessarily domiciled in San Mateo, but they have employees that work in San Mateo, certainly Recology does. And I'm wondering, could we consider making a call to them? There seems to be some confusion over there about the kind of aid they can get. They don't seem to be very well aware of the PPP and how they can, if they qualify for that, or how. Is there anybody we have that could call and let them know? Because that's, as being one of the agencies, we should try to help, I think.
Yeah, we, we can give them a call.
Oh, good, thank you.
I have a question.
Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for that presentation, Drew. I have a question on the parking enforcement. I think every council member got quite a few emails from various members of the public who were kind of caught off guard with kind of a stepped-up enforcement. And I don't even know if you can call it that, if that's what it was. But could you talk a little bit more about kind of what happened? And more importantly, what I'm interested in is when we do start to ramp things up again, do we have a, a plan in place to make sure there's communication with the public to make sure we don't surprise anyone?
Yeah, sure. I think we had gotten things underway. We had done a communications blitz about, about the enforcement that we were, we were going to be doing, and we were kind of phasing into the, to the enforcement. We were starting with residential parking permits and street sweeping, and then we moved into the downtown. So I think there was a gap. We had communicated it, but I think it had been a little while. And so when we pulled out of downtown and pushed, it basically pushed Serco into the neighborhoods. And so they went out and started doing enforcement there. And, you know, I think obviously after, after a day and some complaints, we kind of retrenched and looked at what makes sense to be doing during this time. And that's why we came up with the, the plan to sort of enforce the things that are really health and safety issues and not enforce some of the other things and focus on education. So yeah, when we go back to a more, go back to enhanced enforcement at some point when this, when this ends, it'll be phased in, and we'll make sure that we do a good job communicating it out and getting, getting the word out about the enforcement.
Okay, and one quick follow-up question. In terms of Serco and kind of what their priorities are and what they're doing, do we have anybody on staff that's kind of keeping tabs on if they do like change focus because of one way or another? Depending on how things change and they're adapting, do we have anybody on staff that's kind of keeping tabs just to make sure that they're connected as much as possible to the public?
Yeah, yeah, we, I mean, our traffic sergeant, Sergeant Hagan is oversees the program on the day-to-day level. And I know that they had a meeting with Serco last week to talk about our expectations and what we're doing. So there is someone overseeing the program closely. This is not something that we sort of, you know, say, you know, go do this and then, you know, just send us the tickets. We oversee it pretty closely because we still do our own, we still have our own enforcement program internally. We're still doing the vehicle abatement work internally. And so it is really a partnership with Serco. It's not a mere situation where we just contracted out the entire operation.
Great, thank you.
Amarin, you had a question, and then Diane has a question after you. Hold on, Amarin, unmute yourself.
I was thinking it would be helpful to get a little bit of, of background for the public just to, because hopefully everybody knows that our parks will remain closed, and our golf course will also be closed. So, and a little bit of explanation to the rationale of, of having our maintenance staff there, I think would be helpful. And then I have a couple of questions after that.
Okay. Well, as I noted, you know, with the parks still being open for passive recreation, it's important that we maintain them. We keep them, we keep them mowed and maintained. And also, it's important, we've found that having, having a city vehicle, a marked city vehicle staffed at the parks is helping just have a presence there to make sure that, I think people are less likely to gather in groups and less likely to do the things that we don't want them to do with, with folks on, sort of at the, at the site. As far as the golf course goes, we have some of our golf folks that are deployed to parks several days a week to help out, just to have more numbers, have more people in the parks. But it's also important, even though the golf course is closed, it's critical that we keep it maintained. Or otherwise, we could damage it permanently, and it would cost a lot to, to restore it, to have it available to still play golf on. So we are continuing to maintain even as it's closed.
It's helpful. Thank you. And then I was curious to, to the question about issuing business grants. And if we were to earmark funding for $10,000 business grants, would we have assurance that those grants would be designated specifically for San Mateo businesses?
Yes, we can absolutely do that. And that would be the intent, is the cities are making contributions to have them specifically earmarked for businesses in their community.
Great. And then regarding the, the high-touch business outreach, I think it's such a great service that we're providing. And I wanted to ask specifically about, about our own language access capabilities. Like, are we sourcing or redeploying staff that are multilingual to that team so that they can do outreach in different languages other than English? And specifically, I see the need in Spanish and Chinese.
I'm going to ask if, I think Jennifer Chen's on the line, and I'll ask her if she can respond to that.
If she's not on the line, this is Kathy Kleimbau, and on the team, we do have a Spanish speaker, and Jennifer herself speaks Chinese Mandarin.
Okay, perfect. And then related to that, one of the things that I was wondering about and thinking about was daycare providers. A lot of people have pulled their children out of daycare, and, and they are effectively, a lot of these home-based daycares are small businesses themselves. And they might not be registered or licensed as businesses with the city, but they are business owners and operators, and they will have financial, significant financial impacts. And we are already in a daycare shortage. Looking at that pool, you know, we can easily find their information through, through 4Cs because they are licensed through 4Cs. I would just, you know, if we're not, if that's not already on our radar, I think that that is a really important segment of the business community that we might not be thinking about, but we should be thinking about and should be prioritized in the outreach.
Okay, thanks. We can, we can put that on the list to do.
Great. Diane, you have questions?
Yeah. Drew, I'm very intrigued by this idea of grants for our small businesses. They are so important to our ability to bounce back economically. So my question is, what are you thinking as far as a set aside from the general fund? And how many grants would we be able to do?
Well, I mean, I've been thinking about this over the weekend, and I think that, you know, in looking at what, what our neighboring cities are considering, I think doing something in the realm of 300,000 to 500,000 would be appropriate. Obviously, at 10,000 apiece, that could fund 30 to 50. Now, obviously, with, with our tax revenues down, it's, it's not, not the best time. However, I think it could be even worse if our downtown is decimated. So I mean, I think we have, you know, I would consider looking at this as an investment in our downtown. So if we can keep, keep, help keep businesses open, that's going to create tax revenue going forward.
I'm sorry, you were, he was cutting out on that last portion. If I could just hear the last portion. Did you find he was cutting out also, or was it just me?
I think it was just you, but what, how far did I get?
I think I got most of it as far as it could be a drain on our general fund, but it'd be worth it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the message is, is that, you know, looking, looking long-term at, if, if we can't provide support that will help people, you know, stay in business, that, that provides a benefit long-term, and that will have some payback to us. So looking at this as an investment.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Yeah, Eric, go ahead, Eric.
So Drew, is there any way to try to, if we only have 30 of these, of these hypothetically grants to give out, is there any way to try to make sure that they're going to the businesses that we know that it will help them stay in business? If that's, I mean, I would hate, there's just so many businesses that are in trouble, and, you know, they all deserve some help. But I would really, if we only have 30, say, 30 shots, I would really like it to be aimed so that we can prevent certain areas from, from being decimated as opposed to maybe like a stay-at-home business that really doesn't need the funds, or it's just going to be kind of, you know, maybe pocketed by the owner, and they were going to go out of business anyway, with saying it in, in a little bit less diplomatic terms.
Sure, yeah. And so Roseanne Faust, who's really led the effort to make this happen, is, is working on a memo that should be distributed soon that's going to have more details in it about things like that, about the criteria for getting the grant, and I think some of the prioritization. I think once we, we look at that, we can get a better idea about how we can control for that factor. So, so I don't need a decision tonight because we can bring this back. If, if council's interested, I can bring it back next Monday for, for further consideration after we have more information about the, the types of questions that you're asking. And we can get more information. If the memo doesn't cover it, we can get more information from Roseanne this week.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a question.
Before you ask your question, Amarin, I want to give out the phone number again. So for public comment, please call 951-405-2956. Again, that phone number is 951-405-2956. And enter the conference code ID. The conference code ID is 567-255-729-pound. Again, 567-255-729-pound. Patrice, do we happen to have any public comment yet?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do not have any e-comment at this time, but I do have one person in the phone queue.
Okay, I'm going to kick it back to Amarin to ask her question, then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you. I, I was wondering if you could speak more, more to the decision point between, you know, 300,000 versus 500,000, and what, what are we looking at in terms of the trade-offs? Besides, obviously, the number of businesses, but in terms of, you know, what, what does that mean for our general fund and, and potential expenditures that, that we were anticipating or projects that, that were, you know, services? What's on the chopping block if we were to forebode this?
Well, so, you know, obviously, we've, we've talked about, you know, the, the tax revenues that we're, we're losing this year. And so we're formulating, you know, the 2021 budget, and we'll be coming back with a, a longer-term financial sustainability plan. So the more that we're spending now means more longer-term cuts. There won't be anything, any immediate negative action that we'll have to take as a result of this. We have money that we can absorb this. It's more, sort of, this just adds to the long-term burden. It doesn't add significantly when you're, when you talk $500,000 over, over a 10-year long-term plan. So it's something we can, we can absorb. The other thing, you know, the, the other X-factor is right now, we're saying we think the, the number is $10 million. Maybe it's better, maybe it's worse. We will know better as we get towards the end of the year. So this may be, this may be, could be a drop in the bucket. But, but ultimately, this is, again, as we've talked about over the past couple of weeks, we have been socking away money. We have been prepared for this. So making this expenditure, making this potential investment can, can be absorbed.
Thank you. I think it's really helpful to see it from the long view and understanding that it wouldn't have immediate budgetary impacts and that it would essentially be folded into the $10 million gap that we're looking at.
Yep.
Very good. Any further questions before we go to the public comment? Seeing none, Patrice, please introduce our first public comment.
With pleasure, Mayor. So I wanted to mention for the record that we did receive post-packet, three communications, which council has received in the post-packet, DIAS packet, from Emeshae's Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition and Kelly Moran. Then on our e-comment system, we do not have any comments at this time. I have one phone call calling in, and how this is going to work is if they're in my address book, I see their name. And if not, I see their number, and so I'll either be calling them by name or by the last four digits of their number to unmute them and call them on screen. So our call-in is from Joan Disken, who's in my address book, and I, she's unmuted now. Joan, please go ahead and make your comments.
Hello, this is Joan Disken, employee Joan Disken and citizen Joan Disken. And I do have a question for you tonight, and my question is, do you hear my question?
Yes. That was an easy one. Ask us another one.
I don't have another question, other than I just really appreciate the direction that our city manager is, is keeping all of us as citizens and employees. I, I feel we're in really good shape with his leadership, so thank you for that.
Thank you so much, Joan. That's, that's Joan Disken of 63 years of employment with Salmon Mill. Joan, Joan's going to be the only person on the wall with 60 years of service 20 years from now. Joan, thank you so much for the question, and we all agree with you that Drew and the entire organization are all pulling in the same direction. And we appreciate the shared sacrifices being made at this time to serve our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Joan. Madam Clerk, do we have another public comment?
No, sir. I have no other callers on the line, and I'm just checking one more time. And there is refresh and no e-comment, so I have no other comments.
Okay, I'm going to give out the phone number one last time. If we get any calls between now and the end of the meeting, please let me know. The phone number is 951-405-2956. And the enter conference ID is 567-255-729-pound.
No, sir, I have no other callers on the.
And I'm muting. Eric? Eric? Not you, okay. One more time, 951-405-2956 is the number, and the conference ID number is 567-255-729-pound. With that, I'll bring it back to the council for further comments or a motion.
Are we going to do separate motions here, or do you want it all at once?
Drew, can you, Drew, send it back to our, maybe, can you share your screen again so we can see all the things that we're proving, the actions that you've taken? That would be a lot of motions. You've been doing a lot of stuff. Okay. Unless I'm wrong, I think we can do it in one motion or not. Does anyone have any final comments, or does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Do you want us to, for the small business grants, shall we select an amount at this moment in time?
I, I don't think we have to. For, for one, what we're doing is we're granting Drew I I don't think we have to. For for one, what we're doing is we're granting Drew the authority to start this process. And for two, he's going to bring it back to us to to make those determinations. So we're approving the direction that he's going in right now.
Yeah, I think that works fine.
So we won't have an exact number. Okay, I'm fine with that. So I would make a motion that we confirm the actions that are either anticipated or have been taken pursuant to the emergency proclamation, the actions that have been taken by our city manager, including adjustments to operations, adjustments to deployment of personnel, direct assistance to small business via grants, CGP funding for rental assistance, and essential public works projects.
Second. Great. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please take a roll call vote?
With pleasure, Mayor. Council Councilmember Pappin.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Gopals.
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. Drew onward forward. Keep up the good work. I know every week is a challenge. We have new and interesting things that come up. And this week was barking. But it but it's important. And I don't know about everybody else, but the people who I talked to, once I talked to them, they felt really appreciative and supportive that that we listened to them and that we that we responded to them. So that's that is a good indication of what we should do in the future. Now, I have nothing else on our agenda. Now is the time for reports and announcements. Patrice alluded to comments that we have received from Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition and from residents, such as Kelly Kelly Moran and several others. I believe the proposal has been presented to me in a couple of different ways, but it had mostly to do with slow streets, slow slow streets or safe streets. It is a very difficult time that people are not they're not able to utilize the parks fully. Some neighborhoods don't have backyards and things. And so, does the council want to move forward in a direction of trying to slow cars down and make the streets safer during this time when more people are walking and trying to keep safe distances from each other? Is that is that something people are interested in?
Yes.
Yes.
In in general, Mr. Mayor, I have some additional comments, though.
Okay, I just wanted to tee it up. I'm sending it out to anybody that wants to talk. Rick, why don't you get us started?
Okay, so I read and was interested in the letter from Emma Schleys at the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. And she suggested taking some actions to temporarily slow speed limits on residential streets, which I think is a good idea. Also mentioned things like adjusting lights and so forth. And I think that's, you know, maybe on Alameda and El Camino, those are not streets where we expect to have people walking around on the streets anyway. I think that we don't really need to adjust signal timing. But action to slow, if we were to implement a 15 or 20 mile per hour temporary speed limit, that would make the streets a lot safer for residential users. And I think that would be a good idea.
Okay, anyone else want to speak to this issue?
I'll just say, I agree. And what I would really like is staff to look into how we can make this happen and just doing it in a very thoughtful, methodical way. That's all.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, if I could comment to that.
Drew, go ahead.
Yeah. So we we actually met on this today, and that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to understand better Oakland's program and how it's specifically working. Closing streets, obviously, is a is a challenge, especially when you have people still able to needing to come in and out and deliveries. And so some of the things that we're understanding they're doing, we're we're looking into, we don't necessarily think are concerned that they may cause other problems. We do not want to create greater safety for pedestrians that then creates creates problems for drivers. So we are trying to be very thoughtful about how we do this. We met for a little over an hour today on it, and we're continuing to work. We understand the premise, the idea of slowing people down and ultimately putting together a campaign where we're really talking about pedestrian safety, bike safety, car safety, as we're all trying to share the road. But but we are trying to do it very thoughtfully to make sure that it, once we implement it, something that that will will work and not cause other problems or unintended consequences.
I I'll wait. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ameren.
Just to add to one of the factors to consider, you know, I was I was really surprised to learn on one of the briefing calls with the city manager that that they're going with an analysis that looks at the social distance requirement for active exercise being significantly higher, like 30 to even 60 feet. And and so, you know, as as we look at the design and the whole network of, you know, potential streets to slow or, you know, shut down potentially, we're looking at, you know, a lot of space to actually make that a usable space for active exercise.
Yeah. And that's and that's really the the challenge is is creating, trying to create that kind of space. I mean, the math is really hard on that when when there's still cars on the road. So that's that's our problem. So we're trying to figure out what's the most thoughtful way we can can do that and have it be effective and have it not get into a situation, you know, just where we're getting inundated with calls about people going 17 miles an hour instead of 15 miles an hour.
So I I had a couple of thoughts on this. So one concern that I had was staff time. I don't want this to become something where we get so caught up in the design of it or the signage of it or the enforcement of it, that it ends up costing us way more staff time than we really wanted to invest in the in the beginning. If it can be implemented in a way that doesn't take everybody away from the projects that they need to be working on, then I'm very supportive of it. I just want that to be a factor. My second concern has to do with safety. And I don't want us to be in a position, because my first my first reaction to this was, wait a second, we're encouraging people to go in the streets? Is that what we're doing? Are we? I get that we want people to go outside. I get that people need to walk around the block, especially during this this time where we're cramped in our homes and we're there's significant mental health aspects to getting outside and walking around. However, I can't it seems like a really difficult challenge to be able to speak to every car and have them slow down and the delivery trucks and everything else. I don't want I don't want to do it in a way that makes our pedestrians less safe. So I just want you to know, those are my two concerns as we go into this. Having that having been said, I'm still supportive of it. And I want to mention that Michael Nash, our the president of Smuhaw, he's very supportive of it. He and I talked about it today. It's something that a lot of residents are excited about if we can pull it off in the right way.
And and we're working on it. I think the the key problem that we're finding is that to to do it effectively, such that pedestrians are able to recreate in the street and be safe, you've got to close the road. You've got to physically close the road and enforce it. The problem with that, then, is when you win, how do people get in and out? And that becomes a logistical problem. So then if you if you just say, okay, well, we're gonna kind of close a lane, right, which I think is what was what some have thought about was is you close one entry point. So you, you know, so it creates a little bit of space. You're creating a situation where two cars are easily going to come into conflict with one another. So it's it's very difficult. Because then, to your point, Mayor Gopals, is if you're not fully closing the street, you know, because you want to have people have access to their homes and to get deliveries, you don't want to encourage people to be out in the street. So it's it's solving for that. But you've you've captured the real problem that we're facing with this.
Okay, well, you've got my concern. So I I trust you trying to tackle that. I think everybody has questions and comments at this point. Rick's raising his hand the highest. So Rick, based on that factor alone, I'm gonna call on you first.
Thanks, Joe. So listen, I mean, I'd like to just counter some of the thinking there a little bit, because the fact is, people are already out in the street. I see people on my block and other blocks with their kids out in the street, playing ball, riding bikes, skating. They're being careful. And I do live on a quiet block that's, you know, not a main thoroughfare. But I think that to actually do some sort of a campaign, and I know that there has to be a really good outreach program to make this really work at all. Because, like, you're right, delivery drivers don't know that we set a different speed limit unless we put up some signs somewhere. They have to be able to see something, or they have to be able to receive something where they work.
And that's, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, and that's that's really the direction we're going, which is a campaign about slowing down, knowing that we've got bikes and peds and cars all in the same space. Because I do agree, that is the reality. In order to to be socially distant, two people can't walk on the same sidewalk. Someone's got to jump in the street. So we're trying to deal with that reality and and educate and get signage. But that's kind of the the direction we're going. But but more to come. We just met on it for the first time today.
Thank you.
So regarding signage, when I was in Portland last summer, they have signs, lawn signs on corners all over the place, saying 20 is plenty. So I just want to share that. That's all.
I don't know if 20 is plenty anymore, but we'll figure that out. We're gonna go to Eric next. We're saving the best for last. The ladies have comments after that.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out there that I think that I'm thinking about this as kind of two different things that we're talking about here. And one, I think, applies to San Mateo as a whole. And the other applies to specific areas of San Mateo that are more transportation oriented development, that do not have the backyard, do not have the quiet streets. And and so I wonder, I really, I agree with a lot of things that Councilmember Bonilla said and that our mayor said, but I'm wondering if we can do some sort of targeted approach where those homes that do not have backyards and do not have access to a lot of things that the majority of San Mateo has, if we can kind of focus some efforts there. So if we were gonna slow down traffic or shut down roads, it's going to be a pain. Maybe we need to do those in some specific locations. That's that's the one.
Understood.
That's a really good point. I'm gonna turn to the I'm gonna turn to Ameren and Diane. Diane, would you like to go first?
I'll be very brief. I think what we've all touched on here, and that means at any time when you enter into the road, you're still gonna have to look. I don't care how much we try to slow down traffic. So that's my feeling. All I can say is, let's do it with common sense. And I appreciate that there are certain neighborhoods that may need to use their streets more than others. And if we could maybe target our efforts there, as Councilmember Bonilla was talking about, you know, you're not, Alameda and 92 is not where you're going to want to implement this. But we've heard from the Bay Meadows folks, and maybe that's where we really focus it. And I hope for everybody's sake, when you step off the curb, you always have common sense in mind. That's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Back to Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Pappin and Councilmember Rodriguez and everyone else really said it all. So I just one more vote for prioritizing the the study and the resources in the direction of our TODs, like they would Bay Meadows, that that are more dense, that don't have as much access to private backyards and green space.
Understood.
Patrice, have we been able to generate any public comment on this?
No, sir, we have not.
Okay, I'm sure there's literally dozens of people out there listening to this right now who are glad that we're talking about it. Okay, I hear I hear from Drew that he's already working on that with staff and we're all supportive of it. So that's a good thing. I want to switch gears again to another topic. And one of the things that I've been hearing out there is this feeling that we should not be going forward on non essential housing projects, especially like the mid pen project without getting sufficient public comment. I just, in general, I think there's a concern that we that we would approve or give final approval to a project like that without getting sufficient public comment. And Michael Nash was one of the people who brought this up. I gave him a phone call to talk about it. And I'll give I'll give you my thoughts in two different ways. So on the one hand, yes, I think that it's imperative for all of us to get sufficient public comment on all these projects that are going forward. This is a an affordable housing project. So it's it's an extremely important, albeit maybe even essential project for us to continue moving forward on, based on the housing crisis. And so I accept some of the comments that are being made out there in the public. And and I think we have a very important duty to make sure that we're going forward on public comment. But beneath that, I think, is is also some truth that we've already accepted that we have to push back the the general plan process. We now is not the time, we're not going to be able to get serious input, we're not going to be able to have the forums that we anticipated having. And so what other things do we need to look at and scrutinize and perhaps put off? And it it struck me that we actually have two two ballot measures that people are either gathering signatures for or have already gathered signatures for. And and I I started reaching out to people and suggesting that this may not be the time for us to be debating heights and densities on our ballot for several reasons. Number one, we can't do the public outreach. We can't do signature gathering. The public forums aren't able to happen. There's a lot of reasons that that this may not be the time. We've already had to delay and push back our general plan process. We're being pulled in so many different directions with with the financial burden on the city, with our resources going in lots of different directions, trying to deal with the surge of COVID-19. I had another conversation with Karen Harrell about this this afternoon, and I'll be reaching out to members of SMURG to see whether they agree with me that that these measures on the ballot should rightfully be reconsidered and perhaps put on a later date. I just wanted to throw that out to the council so that you understand my my thoughts, sort of as they are happening, and that I started to reach out and see what the general view of the public is on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Drew?
I just want to mention that in my 20 years of involvement in this city, with all kinds of developments, starting with the Bay Meadows Transit Corridor, and the actual Bay Meadows development itself, every single project that we have ever seen come forth has had, and we have listened to, all public comment from many different ways. Nobody, I think, here would expect anything less than that the public has full access to provide as much public comment as they feel necessary, totally open to it. I have always expected it, listened to it very carefully. I think it's extremely important to hear all of the feelings and thoughts of the public regarding all of these developments. So with that said, I mean, yes, of course, we can reach out more. We've been reaching out a lot already. I think that it's up to the public to express their their point of view. And it's not hard to find out these things are going on. It's all over the internet. It's on the newspapers. It's I encourage the public to look, seek out information. And if you're concerned with anything, or if you have great ideas, please share. Thanks.
Rick, if you don't mind, I want to respond to that just a little bit. So I, in many ways, I agree with everything you just said. And and within what you said, I thought I think there's some defensiveness that I identify with. I get defensive when people say that we aren't that we aren't having public meetings, that why didn't we tell anybody what was happening? And we do our best to tell everybody what's going on and give them all opportunities. And so I get defensive when when people try to say that we're not being transparent enough. And that that may be the wrong response sometimes for council members to get too defensive. I'm also very protective of staff when people go after staff, because it's not the staff who are who are creating this process. It's the council. And if anybody wants to be mad, they should be mad at me. That having been said, I think it's I think especially at this time, it's important for us to recognize that there are lots of people who are far more who are far more worried about the priorities of today than they were about the priorities from three months ago. And, and I wondered, to what extent have our priorities completely changed in a way where we need to consider now is not the time to be putting height and density ballot, especially opposing height and density ballot measures, uh, on the ballot? It's just a conversation that I'm gonna be having with people in the next couple of weeks to see what direction we go in, but, um, I, I don't want it, I just want to bring that up to all of you so that you know that I'm having these conversations and s- and so that the public see, sort of sees what's, what's happening and why, why it's happening. It really, it really came up from a letter from Smoohaw talking about the difficulty of having public comment and public conversations at this time. So, um, with that, I'm sure we've generated some public comment. Patrice?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, we have a caller on the line with the last, um, four digits of four, four, nine, eight. And I will, um, if you could unmute yourself and go ahead and provide your public comment. Star six will unmute you. Is this phone number two, two, four, 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 nine, eight? Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and I'll see if I can solve this outside the system.
Okay, let me kick it back to other councilmembers if there's any questions or comments. Um, I, I think several people probably seen the letter going around from Smoohaw and, uh, and the concerns about our public process at this point. And, and a very serious question about what things should be delayed and what should not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, for going ahead and reiterating your thoughts, uh, after I spoke. Of course, I'm interested in having that conversation about the ballot measures. I do question the timing right now. So many things are in flux, the world is being turned over. And it's hard for anybody to go gather any signatures, I think it's impossible. So we need to, you know, uh, think about letting some things have a rest until we can get some things back into working order. I, I agree with that, I think.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a, a comment, um, the, the one consideration on the, the Downtown Opportunity Sites project is there are some funding deadlines that we need to be aware of. And so, um, what, what we'll do if it, if it's okay with the council is, at, during next week's update, I can go through those, um, through those deadlines and discuss the implications of any sort of delay to the project at this point.
I, I would appreciate that very much, Drew. And, and to be fair, um, when Michael Nash brought up his concerns to me, um, over the public process and about that project in particular, he had very specific, I mean, he understands the project and all of the funding as well as anybody working on this. And, and I appreciate his support for affordable housing. Um, I do think that that's a unique aspect to this, is that it is a, uh, an affordable housing project with important, um, funding deadlines that it needs to hit. I, I think part of his concerns, and they were very specific, have to do with concessions being made for this project that could be, um, that could be a precedent for going forward. And he, he doesn't, doesn't want us to, to get in a, in a position where we've made this concession to this one. And so now all future housing projects would get that same concession. So it, it is very nuanced, and we can continue to have this conversation with everybody. I'm not suggesting that we just scrap everything. But, um, it's always incumbent on us to, to make sure we have a very robust public process. Let's give that public comment another shot.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Lisa, are you ready to con- speak now?
I am, I am.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hello there, thank you all very much for all you're doing. I, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this up. And I think the focus on public comment is so important. I think the idea of pushing the ballot initiatives back is a very, uh, touchy, and I guess is the best way I could say, because everyone who is working on all the ballot initiatives has a lot of interest in seeing them go forward on both of the initiatives. So I would be interested in how you would propose to get the word out to give citizens the opportunity to comment if this idea went forward. I would be concerned if the idea went forward without really a very extensive public comment outside of this forum.
Lisa, if you don't mind, Lisa, if you don't mind staying on the phone for just a second, I, I think you made, you bring up a very excellent point, um, which is, it's an extremely difficult time to, to do this. That's, that's really the, the reason that we're talking about it at all is because it's so challenging to have public conversations at this time. And even the letter that, that, um, even the letter that Michael was sending to me was based, it was representative of Smoohaw, but it was based on only a few conversations that he had with a couple of, uh, members of the executive board. So it's an, it's a, almost impossible situation to try to do the outreach that you're talking about, uh, one way or the other. And I'm not trying to take anybody's vote away from anybody. The, the ballot measures and the will of the people will, uh, will go forward. Um, and, and the residents will speak. But I, I, I see it both ways. You're, you're saying it would be hard to take it off because we can't talk to everybody. And I say, maybe it shouldn't stay on because we can't talk to hardly anybody. So it, it is something we will continue to talk about. Um, thank you very much for the phone call.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I look forward to the continued conversation.
Excellent. Um, any other public comment? Patrice?
Uh, no, sir, I do not have anything else in the queue.
Patrice, can I give you a, a, a big, huge compliment that the system is up and running and working? Congratulations. I, I do, I really do appreciate that. Any, any other comments from any councilmembers, any other reports and announcements?
I have two announcements, if we're ready to move forward.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, so, um, you might have seen in the art, in the news that, uh, the API Caucus of San Mateo County has, um, has gathered a lot of support among electeds at all levels denouncing stigmatization and racism and xenophobia during COVID nineteen, which has largely been targeting the Asian community. And, um, and many cities are actually, um, taking it upon us themselves to create a pro- a proclamation to that effect. And the Daily City, um, I, I think, um, heard one yesterday or is considering one. And I would like to raise it as an opportunity for the council to take up and can share the Daily City proclamation.
Uh, any thoughts, has anybody had an opportunity to take a look at that?
I have had a look and I support it. I think we should issue our own proclamation.
Excellent, thank you.
I supported it as well.
Okay, great, Diane? Eric, any comments?
Yep, yep, I supported it as well.
Okay, let's bring that forward next time.
Great. And that's wonderful.
You have a second announcement.
I have a second announcement. So as, as a board member of the API Caucus, I was appointed to the Co- the county's COVID nineteen strategic planning task force. And I wanted to just give a high-level overview of what, um, what we are talking about. So there are, um, several focus areas. Number one is preparing, is preparing for a secondary natural disaster while sheltering in place. Number two is education and childcare services. Three is triggers for lifting shelter in place, modeling, testing, and tracing. Four, delivering resources to a shelter in place population. Five is economic recovery and financial impact planning. Six is preparing for a second wave. And seven is, is planning for underserved populations and equity. So, um, there are a series of breakout workshops and, um, that are happening, that happened today and also will be happening tomorrow. And to the extent that the council is interested, I can provide some updates.
Excellent, thank you very much. Um, I encourage anybody who wants to to, um, get that information from Councilmember Lee. Um, I have one final announcement, and that is that there's, I'm knocking on wood right now, that there's going to be a town hall tomorrow. So we're, we're attempting to put on a town hall tomorrow. It's actually going to utilize this platform, Teams, uh, but a slightly different product of Teams. It's called Teams Live. Uh, that'll be tomorrow at three o'clock, uh, trying to get as many questions from the public answered as possible. Uh, there's a number of people who are gonna be joining me on that call to hopefully answer those questions intelligently. I think people clearly understood that I could not be answering, the one answering the questions if we wanted good information getting out there, so we, we made sure to have experts. Um, and so, um, if there's anything specific that you think I should be trying to get out there that I should include in the, uh, town hall, please let me know. And, and I encourage you to participate. That's all I have, unless there's anything else. Drew, is there anything else?
Nothing from me.
Patrice, is there anything else?
No, sir, no other speakers.
Okay, and our next meeting is our regularly scheduled meeting, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we have a study session next week?
We have a study session and a closed session prior to the meeting.
Okay, so we'll have a, a study session at five thirty, and then a closed se- excuse me, six o'clock?
Six o'clock for the study session and five thirty for the closed session at this time.
Okay, so closed session five thirty, study session six, regular meeting seven o'clock.
Yes, sir.
And it will be virtual. And, and this, uh, and we will have this, uh, will it be the same phone number, Patrice?
Yes, the phone number will remain the same, but the co- conference ID will change with each meeting.
Okay, so we'll be sure to publish the phone number and the conference ID with the staff reports and the regular agenda.
Yes.
And, um, and we look forward to that. Thank you so much to everyone, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you all, be late.
Thank you.
Thanks, good night.